All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Willow Springs Village Board Meeting. This is the Willow Springs Village Board Meeting. The date is January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is seven P. M. And this meeting is called order. Madam Clerk, Charles, can you please call the role?
Trusty Ar, Kennedy, Micah, Hash, Moon, Car, President Nedermeier.
Present. That completes the role. Thank you. Let's all please rise for the congratulations. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under ever, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We have done readings through our village business for first edition of previous minutes. In our board pack, we have meeting minutes from our last meeting, January twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. I have motion to approve those minutes by trustee Kennedy. Second, by trustee Moon. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, there being non-roll call vote.
Trusty Ar, Kennedy, Micah, Hash, Moon, Car.
All eyes on those meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Village Administrator report. Administrator.
Thank you. I'd like to give the the board and the public a status on the Lyons Towne district two oh four land that located along Willow Springs Road here in Willow Springs. At our last village board meeting, I announced that we were attempting to meet with the highest bidder for the property, which was Bridge Industrial, to discuss their proposal and their development plans. They agreed to meet with President Nedermeier and myself. That meeting took place on January the seventeenth. Bridge's executives shared their vision for the property and explained that they had been working with District Two oh Four administration for over a year to secure the purpose of that. President Nedermeier informed Bridge that our zoning specifically excludes industrial development in this area, and that we would not be willing to modify our zoning code to accommodate their proposals. The Bridge executives understood the village's stance, and they told us that they do not wish to force themselves into a community that they are not wanted in. Our meeting was informative, and it was professional. We have no additional communication since January seventeenth with Bridge. On January the twenty-third, we attended the District Two oh Four Board of Education meeting. Again, I'd like to thank our entire village board for accompanying us to that meeting so that we could deliver a unified message. We provided a statement to the school board emphasizing that we will not be changing our zoning code, and we urged them to consider our zoning requirements if they wish to continue exploring sales options. We also, excuse me, we also provided a copy of our zoning ordinance to each school board member. Currently, the District Two oh Four administration has stated that they are going to continue to explore their offers and see if any other offers come in on property. They have rejected the proposal from Bridge Industrial at this time. We will be monitoring this closely, and we will continue to update the community if they again consider the sale of this property. To date, Lyons Towne district two oh four has not met with myself or any other village official to discuss their intentions. President Nedermeier, anything to add?
Thank you for that report, Administrator Chris. I will add to that. Another concern that has been raised recently is the possibility of the property being disconnected or de-announced. This was raised at our last board meeting as well, and as our attorney said then, disconnection is governed by statute. The property owner would have to meet a high burden to allow this to happen, and it is very unlikely. But in addition to that, to successfully disconnect, the property owner would have to somewhere to annex. We have been in communication with leadership in our neighboring towns throughout this issue, and we have been extremely bringing support of Willow Springs proposition to industrial apartments property. The village of Bridge is expected to pass a resolution at their next meeting in opposition to industrial development on the property. And in addition, I spoke to the Hodgins Mayor yesterday. Mayor knows that, and he assured me that Hodgins will not hand this property into Hodgins. I asked him if I could state that in a public statement because there is quite a bit concerning the community, and he said absolutely. All of this information together should alleviate any concern that the property would be disconnected and annexed elsewhere and then ultimately developed into an industrial property, right? But should alleviate that concern, nonetheless, we will continue to monitor it and protect against what's happening and represent the village of Willow Springs.
Thank you. This is just a reminder, this Saturday, we are going to be having bingo at our community center. It should be a fun evening. Please come out and join us. And also, I would like to wish the mayor a happy birthday. Do you all like to wish the mayor a happy birthday?
Happy birthday, Mayor. And I conclude my report this evening. Thank you. Thank you for your report and for your work on that, Ms. Jackson. We will move on now to village attorney for no verbal report. Thank you. Village Cutter?
Just for the trustee's, I cast out a preliminary on audit of the issues. Thanks for looking at your. Don't want to take a lot, too much time at all when we add on the fact that we have a suspect surplus. Yeah, we'll be obviously going to audit these numbers, but this continuation will be done to back in the budget process in November, December. If there's any specific questions, people only have to be glad to entertain them, but I think good to see how everybody's kind of come through at the end of the year.
Thank you for that. Reports of standing committees. First is fines and administration committee trustee Ar.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve of seventy-one, warrant number twenty-three, death, two, dated January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, payroll and fund expenses, probably two hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars fifty-five.
All right, we have that motion by trustee Ar, third second, by trustee Hash. Any discussion or questions on the warrant? All right, there being none, let's take a roll.
Trusty Ar, Kennedy, Micah, Hash, Moon, and Car.
All eyes on this warrant, Senator.
I'd also like to really speak really to the animals, brings you know, here, twenty twenty-two. It's always interesting to look at any more important compared to here. This half year, twenty twenty-two, basically, the amount of money that was fully capitalized, it was paid over the dollars for down in there, that much money being spent on gambling, and hopefully, everybody is putting in really, hopefully, in the other, at any rate, it turned out profit for video gambling for the businesses and their partners is over three and a half million, and portion of that at Willow Springs was almost one hundred and eighty dollars, which is, all of that is over twenty percent increase pretty scary, and above all, for anybody who's ever read it. So that's all really good. Another interesting fact is the fact that the top five businesses, which I usually, as you know, those are, and they account for sixty-six percent of of video gambling that happens in the town. We did lose a couple of video gambling vendors late last year, or I should say, late twenty twenty-one, and they were placed with two new vendors throughout this year, and as a company, we go back at thirteen businesses, about we're up by five machines. I'm sure they contributed to it, but video gambling, this continues to prosper in Willow Springs, so it's good for that town and it's good for the revenue that we're making. Who's my report?
Okay, thanks for your report, Trusty Ar. Public Safety Committee trustee Kennedy.
Thanks, Madam President. The only thing I have to report on today is that the chief has been working on getting a new hire for this year as per the budget. He's working hard on that. But that happens, includes my report.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Municipal Buildings and Grounds Committee trustee Michael.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no report though. Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Public Works Committee trustee Connie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank all the Works Department. Presidents that are here, really, in the last two days, trying to take care of themselves. And I think they've done pretty good, yeah. These guys, they have many complaints, but I know they've all been doing work, and I don't think they're done yet. So that I'm sorry for the less.
Vice President franchise committee trustee Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any new business for this one, although we got two very kind ones. Just a brief, and any more to add?
Good. Thank you, trustee man. But building and zoning committee trustee Car.
I have a little report.
Okay, thank you. We will move into action items. First, with the act, I approve Redford Roofing Company, one twenty-one, Ontario Street, Springfield, Illinois, so fortunately, to replace the village hall room at cost not through the speed, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And Anthony Brandt gave a brief summary of that process, and so I would ask if we have a motion to approve that.
I have a motion.
I'm certain. The motion is by trustee Kennedy, the second by trustee Micah. Discussions or questions?
I had an expression, sure, and we talk about funds for this. This all comes from capital reserves funding for this law ordinance specifically invited as for the funds.
Thank you for adding that clarification, but here. Okay, any further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Trusty Ar, Kennedy, Micah, Hash, Moon, Car.
All eyes on that is first. Thank you. Next is consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash argument one, resolution supporting village ordinance thirty-one dash oh dash two thousand and seven. And so we have this in our board pack. It's a resolution for those present. Ordinance thirty-one dash oh dash two thousand and seven is the zoning for the vacant property that we have been talking about. Okay, so back in two thousand and seven, that property was zoned by ordinance. The zoning is given a lot of careful thought at that time by the community and professionals, and they came up with the zoning in that ordinance. And so that includes things like single-family residential, light retail, and senior housing. It provides things like industrial and warehouses. So what we're doing tonight here is passing a resolution to formally say that we support that one. I think that covering the background, so I'll ask for a moment to. Can we, can we push that to public comment? We're almost there.
Do it before you take the vote.
Yes, I'll.
I would like to request, as part of the vote, that that is for any extended amount of time, not to be any less than for instance, maybe five years, ten years, or something like that. Because there's a lot of concern that that maybe in the future, shortly, while they're still trying to sell it, that somehow they manage to get the village or Hodgins to change their mind, however. But if that was in that resolution, and it could protect even for, you know, minimize the concern to and that may be, that could be added tonight with a little initial with the data. That's just my suggestion.
I don't know if legally you can make that on the floor, but what I would say to that, Mr. Whitey, right? What I would say to that is that the resolution would be going forward indefinitely, just as the zoning, right, is there indefinitely. And the only way to change from that zoning is to come before the village, first in planning zoning, and then again, before the village board to get a bearing. And we are stating again here, through this resolution, we are committed to supporting that zoning. We have said we respect the laws. This village or will not be there from the zoning. So I don't know that adding is possible, but I don't think that would make a difference.
Probably this board can change. Well, fishy, maybe. There's no certain, and when they know they're going to make progress, she's got to have it in their way. But if this were added, it would prevent that.
I understand. Yeah, I understand your concern there, and my feedback to that, I don't know that it would still have to come before our planning and zoning board ten years from now, fifteen years from now.
It would prevent the current.
Yeah, that's been on the books since two thousand and seven. I don't, it's indefinite, yeah, until it's changed, and we have no intention of changing it. I guess that's about it, Andrew. I don't think legally we can have another input. Yeah.
Excellent. I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you. So I think, yeah, to clarify, this serves indefinite until someone at some point down the road, long after us, whatever, feel the need to change it. But this is indefinite in place. It's a resolution that we are again supporting that zoning from two thousand and seven. May I have the motion again?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Michael. Second by trustee Moon. Discussion.
Madam President, I'm sorry, because I go back. I always think the laws.
Ernie, where are?
I'm sorry.
Any questions on this resolution discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say that in a bit of research, I was really trying to better understand what the village ordinance was, and I was really impressed at the time of the painstaking efforts that I'm then building for, with resident input, as you said, consultant members on board to gather all that information and formulate a plan that eventually got approved in two thousand and seven. I had a first very review of the land plan from the consultants, and it varied that I thought it was appropriate that we're team out of it to fit what the residents wanted and what was best for the village, and I still think it's that way right now. And I just wanted to reassure, like, that people have looked at this. There was a reason why we did this. This is the reason why this run so far.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Okay, let's call it over.
Trusty Ar, Kennedy, Micah, Hash, Moon, Car.
All eyes on that resolution is approved. Is there any old business? Any new business? Okay, we'll begin public comment. If anybody signed up.
I do have that list.
Okay, and so I want to remind, public comment is limited, it's not a question.
I have Tim. It's V L C E K. Yeah, okay. You want to step up to the podium, please?
You, everyone, you guys are doing great tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to make all this people not reverse, if I'm going to make, it's going to be nothing major for sixty years. Playing hockey, healthy, you might afford kids much to love me. I spent a lot of time in Willow Springs, growing up, a lot of my friends lived there, and, you know, to have a great love of the community and the way the community does, and the fact that the LT board is not transparent with Willow Springs, or in the constituents of the LT vision itself, is unacceptable. I want everybody to know, unfortunately, not to get elected to the school board, which I'm working on, never support. Any type of project that would change the character of Willow Springs. I appreciate the work of the meeting tonight. Everyone, a lot of the work that comes up. New me, but I can tell you that things that are being done there are not the same. Thank you, everybody.
The next person is Mario in Verona.
And well, we're rational. You know. And the LT board decided to spend a year in Darfur, Illinois, on property to, oh. And then after years with the work that. So it involved, you can honestly have something of this, a more rational person. And and maybe they do. And so but I'm sorry, they were bringing additional outside, so as an expert in this field, so that we, as an organ, as a community, a direct communication in a certain way, that doesn't involve the loopholes or the fact where my subject could be put for us. Yeah. But the point for not sort of insulting you, I mean, I believe you could have very intentionally. Yeah, for me, and the way they're buying and everything as well, is they said that the rent is worth fifty-five dollars. They got it as a benchmark. And in fact, then it's not worth fifty-five twenty dollars. In the same way that it's not worth what a whole burning car would have been for. You know. It's, but it's, it's beautiful. And top life use allows for it to stay there. And I just want the board to be very firm in the stance that it's not worth it. Because this board accused of the issue of wanting this property better not changing its own. And that it never had that value, so.
Hey, next I have Bill Scott.
Thank you. Be the dead horse, right? So there are basically four major things here. Safe your residence, decrease traffic, and for you, right, but it's all close to that, there's some cool. The infrastructure improves, and they have to go into the area around there to be allowed for this to occur, like, paint, right? That's implication on the residents of the village, right? I expect just also when companies that big come in, invite people, it's not fair to my hats, it's not this, right? That's another thought to have. Is that village going to bring the ability back to work for diminished properties and some tax stuff? So how do we look to make sure that when I go through this again in another ten years, fifteen years, twenty years? So jumping on, doing a little bit of research, you know, I have research background. The zoning ordinance seems to be the way that this has to be addressed, right? And looking at the zoning ordinance for Willow Springs, it's fairly vague and not being in theory. I people lots of holes and made arguments for both sides of things that are being that zoning ordinance. So I went ahead and looked at other communities around here, and they are more dilated and specific, and there's only orders that you make sure that they're all sold. Or people lost money to get things to pay off. So what I'm proposing is that the zoning ordinance be looked at again and be written in a very specific manner, where especially that piece of property, if you got something like industrial cannot be X amount of distance from a school or residential area, that is not. Very simple, not even considered for a property that needs the criteria. Like, there's a lot of things to be done to dial this in, so that we don't have to. And I think that is the thing that in our speech, we're all about, is to feel comfortable with the village, you know, kind of doing, right? We thank you for everything you're doing, and I heard you talking to a lot of people, Lions team, and he said, she said, guess what? All those people changed, and everybody has a dollar, right? What doesn't have a dollar, not get changed. We put it in writing, so it is covered, right? And that's what I just want you guys to think about. And is there any commission for this village?
There's a pending zoning commission.
There is, okay. And so maybe that's something that maybe residents get involved in, and the writing of this, or, you know, or things to be done, but I guess it involves your work, we trust what you're doing, but it's also a lot of help to make sure or to target or log it together.
And Frank Bianco.
So I had a. So we changed, came a lot, then we would stay in front of that player that you, we will know, okay. I guess the resolution might have covered that around. I had a question about the, anything you answered that question, I think. The only, I guess, thing that I would like to see was, rather than, and don't take this sort of way, but salary, non-resident, did that speech in the board the other night? It should have been there, big words standing behind her.
Next I have Patrick Martin.
Hey, good evening, everybody. First of all, thanks for everything this whole time. I think other times, in the form, not so like, maybe more, you know, you know, to me, usually, they'll see me in form for all of you together. It was a problem, right? The difference, and I for, um, and all the, uh, for, um, kind of, yeah, for people comments, um, or you were acting determined, you know, on board that is happening. So for that, I should be applauded, uh, because you were the other one of the community that did that. I think it was their passion. You actually acknowledged him, so, yeah. Who goes to intervene on public media or social media, you know, divisions? We're looking to you as being leaders. I would tell you that I have a sign in front of my house that knows this development. They had a mirror in my house, we got a sign. In fact, I don't think there's a sign in front of anybody's house. This has been in this, in the media for the last week, and unfortunately, none of our phone numbers are 13. We must have a sign in the house. I have a sign in the house, like, maybe. For me, for a report, I think that if you want, I mean, she didn't want us to have, and we look at scenes. I'm the kind of guy that moves through the lines. I'm the kind of guy and lines. And you only get a long time to, to forget. You know, the bridge industry, it is. You know, the bridge industry is all in lines. You know, the bridge industry is developing. Never go get a session closed. But I have really hard to believe that somebody on this board did not know that bridge industry is part of this Royal Springs. I don't think that the board knows that, that bridge industry, and they're playing, moving toward, but I do believe he wanted to organize them. And the accusation came on that. I strongly support, um, the speakers is all performing. I really do think that this can't be, that is known that this property cannot be built, right?
Thank you. Right, that is a couple of things. Yes, that's fine.
Yeah. Or.
You know, but I just have you sign your name to this, please. You could, you could take it up over, over there by you if you like, give it back to me.
Um, thanks for saying that. I was a little bit of a, a little drunk, but the one thing which I would like to do, everybody attention.